I'd like to call the meeting to an end if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome. You'll notice there's a few less of us this evening. We have vacations and some travel, so we do have enough for a meeting with four members. Before we do roll call, I'd like to take a minute this evening. We lost a very near and dear friend at Medina City Council and former council member, John Wetzel. Mr. Wetzel passed away on May 26, 2022. He served on Medina City Council for 15 years. Myself, Mr. Simpson, Mrs. Hare on her first term of council, served with them. Mrs. Hazeltime represents, she followed Mr. Wetzel, and I know she knew him well from her neighborhood. And John was a great guy and just dedicated public servant to Medina. His point of view and what he brought to council was very valued and appreciated from all of us that served with him, and I'm sure with Mrs. Hazeltime just knowing him. But we'd like to take a moment tonight of silence. And I've got to say one other thing about Mr. Wetzel. The one thing that bothered him more than anything was when we did the emergency clause. And tonight, because we only have four members, there'll be no emergency clauses this evening. And I know Mr. Wetzel will be very, very happy looking down on us, but we send our condolences to his family, his daughter and son, and thank him for his years of service. So if you'd please join me in a moment of silence for Mr. Wetzel. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hazeltime.
Present.
Lamb.
Rose.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
I'd like to accept the minutes prepared by our clerk of council, Mrs. Patton, for our last council meeting.
And also then the special meeting.
Oh, the special meeting, yes.
There's two, May 20.
Where we did pass all of our emergency clauses.
Mr. Simpson made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Reports of standing committees. The finance meeting met this evening before council. Our next finance committee will be June 27th before our next council meeting. Public properties, which I chair, no meeting scheduled and no report this evening. Health, safety and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Special legislation would be Mr. Lamb, but he is not here. Hazeltime, was there any update? Okay.
Other than the next scheduled meeting, no.
Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, nothing, no scheduled meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Waters and utilities, Ms. Hazeltime.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is no report at this time and no scheduled meetings.
And then emergent sanctologies, which would be Mr. Rose, but he is not here either this evening. Request for council action for the finance committee, 22-131, amend ordinance 82-22, which is account numbers. 22-132 expenditures to renovate the restrooms, Mason Custom Builders, ARPA funds. 22-133 expenditures regarding the replace restroom flooring, Ohio Garage Interiors, also with ARPA funds. 22-134 expenditure, replace council service counter, Mason Custom Builders, also funded through the ARPA. 22-135, amend ordinance 60-22 to increase APA for Wickard Insurance. 22-136, amend resolution 15321 for the plan year 21, CDGP grant, activity number three. 22-137 bids 22-23 equipment and general pavement services. 22-138, increase expenditures for point spring and dry shaft for the sanitation department. 22-139, task order number seven for Delta Airport Consultants. 22-140, transfer .1874 acres of city lot 9374 to the Medina City Development Corp. And 22-141, city CIC reimbursement agreement. Reports of municipal officers. We'll begin with Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Memorial Day Parade was May 30. I'm happy to report that the parade and ceremony at Spring Grove Cemetery both went very well and were well attended. We're thankful for the great weather that we had. The band concerts, Friday night band concerts kicked off on June 3. I did a welcome at that concert as well as a proclamation for Marcus Nyman, the conductor. He has been the conductor of the Medina Community Band for 50 years, and we'd just like to offer him our congratulations. The band concerts will continue each Friday night in June and July, as well as July 4, and each of those concerts are on Public Square, weather permitting, at 8:30 p.m. The farmer's market is back on the square each Saturday morning. Some of the upcoming square events between this council meeting and the one on the 27th, Pizza Palooza on the square is from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Saturday, June 18. That's this coming Saturday. Our Mako Opera Under the Stars is from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, June 18. The Juneteenth celebration will be the following day, June 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Public Square. And the Party in the Park Youth Event will be from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 25. People have been asking about the fireworks and the July 4 parade. Both are on this year. We do the fireworks on July 3. We can't tell you a specific time because it just depends on the cloudiness and sunshine as to when it actually gets dark enough to see them, but they will be at dark. And July 4, the parade lines up at Medina High School. It starts at 4:00 p.m. and goes from Spring Grove and Liberty down to Court Street, South on Court to Washington, and then east on Washington and breaks up alongside of the library and Garfield School there. Public members that may be interested in city meetings can check the website or if you email Kathy Patton, the council clerk, at Kpatton, P-A-T-T-O-N, at medinoh.org. She'd be happy to add your email to the list for upcoming meetings. And then last but not least, the pride flags were approved for about a week versus the month of June due to other events in June, and the flags were posted from June 1 to June 9. The flags needed to be taken down in preparation for Flag Day, and actually, the community band had a Flag Day concert on June 10. So we went back to the American flags. The Juneteenth flags will be posted June 17 through June 20 to recognize a new national holiday. Juneteenth community event and church service will be held on the square Sunday, June 19 from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the public is welcome. American flags will then return for the Great Race Event the following day, June 21, and remain thereafter. The law director is currently reviewing the legality, constitutionality and case law for posting other flags on public property. After that research, there may be public meetings with council to determine interest, process, costs and approvals for same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hanwell. Finance Director, Mr. Keith Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you. City Law Director, Mr. Greg Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Police Chief, Ed Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize two of our officers who have recently graduated from different leadership programs. Officer Darren Weinbrunner recently graduated from Leadership Medina's LEED class. The LEED class provides area leaders with the tools and skills to excel as business and community and government leaders throughout Medina County. Additionally, Sergeant Nate Simpson, this past Friday, graduated from the Public Safety Leadership Academy. The Public Safety Leadership Academy is an 11-week in-residence school instructed by the Ohio State University-Klins School of Public Affairs, and it is sponsored by the Ohio Department of Public Safety. The Public Safety Leadership Academy provides intensive leadership training to law enforcement leaders and supervisors representing departments throughout the state. Sergeant Simpson received special recognition for his final capstone project involving officer wellness and peer support programs. We're especially proud of that recognition he received. We're proud to say we now have five police supervisors who have completed the Public Safety Leadership Course of Instruction. Congratulations to both of those officers, Sergeant Simpson and Officer Weinbrunner. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Kenny. We're all proud of the officers, and I have a feeling Mr. Simpson is especially proud of one of those officers as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Mrs. Kimberly Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next ribbon-cutting day is set for July 15, and we are still scheduling events. However, so far, we have a 30th anniversary celebration for Century Cycles. It's actually moving to a new location at 875 North Court Street, which is in the Medina Shopping Plaza. And then official grand opening for the Monarcha Cantina Restaurant is the New Mexican Restaurant at 108 Public Square. That's the former Amuse Bistro space. We did have an opportunity to attend a soft opening earlier this afternoon, and the food is fantastic and the decor is stunning. I think it'll be a great addition to not just the historic district but the city, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Service Director, Mr. Nino Picoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. City Engineer and Birthday Boy, Happy Birthday, Mr. Patton, Pat Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. This afternoon, the Board of Control awarded three contracts. The first one was for the reconstruction of South Prospect Street in the amount of $1,420,000. The second one was the Ray Mallett parking lot expansion in Dog Park. That contract is valued at $264,000. And the final one was our annual concrete pavement joint ceiling project, and that was awarded for a total of $61,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Fire Chief, Larry Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick announcements. The county fire chiefs, Medina County Fire Chiefs have organized a fallen firefighters' memorial event that is set to honor fallen firefighters from our county fire departments. And the inaugural event will be this Saturday, June 18 at 10:00 a.m. at the Brunswick City Fire Station, Number One, on Center Road. So we're looking forward to that. And then just if we all aren't already aware, the National Weather Service has upgraded our areas' risk for overnight severe storms to an enhanced level. The significance about that is the timing. It'll be after most of us go to bed tonight, so make sure you have a way to be warned. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Parks and Recreation Director, as well as Rec Center, Jansen Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to provide an update, our three updates, actually. Our Parks, Party in the Park series begins this Wednesday. It's a seven-week series. This Wednesday, there will be an event at Fred Greenwood Park from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. featuring Jungle Bob, who will be bringing a live zoo essentially with him. That is from 2 to 4. On June 22, we will be at the Rec Center for our Touch a Truck event. That is from 10:00 a. to 12:00 p. And these events are free to the public, sponsored by the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital. We are asking that those interested register either at medinarec.org or follow our Facebook page to get a link to registration. The memorial pool is very busy, obviously, with the weather this week. We expect that to get even better. We are now offering outdoor pool passes to be purchased online, so you can save yourself some time and not wait in line. Those could be purchased at medinarec.org. The pools open daily, 11:00 a.m. to 6:45 p.m., weather permitting. And lastly, some good news for the Rec Center. The House Bill 687 was recently approved in that there was a state capital grant request from the Medina Recreation Center in the amount of $350,000 that was awarded for the Recreation Center addition to the fitness room. So we're excited that that was funded and look forward to getting some more room at the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Some good news there. And finally, Mr. Andrew Dutton, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, we've been working on our Conference of Plan update for the better part of a year with our consultant OHM advisors. At this point, we have a working draft created and have started the adoption process, so we have a couple of things to announce. We have a pre-recorded Conference of Plan presentation available online. It's at www.madinaconstpland2021.wordpress.com. There are a number of videos, but there's one that's very recent that goes over the plan, the process and highlights some notable areas. We're also going to have a public open house on June 21 at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers, followed by a presentation to our planning commission. So everyone is welcome to attend and watch the presentation there on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Notices, communications and petitions, there are none this evening. Unfinished business, we have one item for a third reading, and we will vote on this tonight. It's ordinance 93-22, an ordinance authorizing the zoning map amendment to change the zoning at 801 Lafayette Road from I-1 Industrial to C-3 General Commercial. I want to entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Dutton.
I guess this is a rezoning of 1.08 acres at 801 Lafayette Road from I-1. It's industrial to C-3, which is a general commercial district. The application is from Medina Metropolitan Housing, and the purpose ultimately is for a multifamily housing development, which is a conditional use in the C-3 district. The planning commission heard the application and recommended approval in March. Council held a public hearing in April, and staff also recommends approval of the rezoning. And just one note that I noticed in the ordinance, the planning commission actually heard the rezoning on March 10, not March 1, so I think some numbers just got transposed there, yeah.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Ordinance 93-22 passes 4-0.
Thank you. Introduction of visitors. Members of public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue concerned which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the back microphone there where the clerk is standing and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Jenny, if you want to start? Right behind you there.
In this country...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Scott Jenny, 821 Dogwood Trail, Medina, Ohio. Lived there for 32 years. In this country, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. People come to this country because we are free and we have individual rights and freedoms given by God. We are a united country under the American flag. It stands for all Americans to have the right to fly any flag they want on their own homes, businesses and personal property. We always fly the American flag and the Air Force flag in front of our home. Some people fly other countries' flags or interest groups on their house, business or personal property. We are afforded rights, those rights, under what the American flag stands for, which our servicemen and women lay down their lives for every day. But when our elected government officials, whether local, state or federal, decide for themselves what flag should be flown to represent everyone as a whole, that only creates division and does not make us united. Mayor Hanwell made a personal decision by himself to take down our American flags that stand for freedom for all and replace them with a sexual preference flag around our historic public square. Our public square represents all residents of Medina, but because he was lobbied by a special interest group that paid for the flags, he alone made the decision to fly them on our square. Mr. Mayor, those sexual preference flags don't represent Medina as a whole. It only divides us. Now that you've allowed a special interest group to pay for and fly their flags on our public square, you have set a precedence and flung the doors wide open for the same rights to other residents of this community. Taking down our American flag, which represents the right to all to fly any flag they wish on their own property or business, is atrocious. The sexual preference flag shouldn't have been flown on our public square for even one minute. What's next? If it were up to me, I'd pay for all service flags to be flown, Air Force, Army, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, police and fire. I'd also pay for pro-life flags or Christian flags to be flown. Someone else may want pro-choice flags or the religious flags flown, such as Jewish, Hindu, Buddhist or Islam. How about Republican or Democrat flags? It is never-ending. None of these flags, including the ones I might personally want flown, would represent all of us as a community or a nation, except for the American flag. It is the only flag that covers us all and unites us all as Americans. It represents our freedoms and liberties given by God that others flock to this country for. Stop dividing us. It's time this nation unites the way our forefathers and authors of our Constitution meant this country to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Murdock. I live at 495 Gladstone Drive, and I agree with what the gentleman just talked about. And I also, we all just remember too, we just said to pledge allegiance to the United States to the flag, and it talked about our God, and I don't think our God would appreciate anything that we're doing with these pride flags. The other thing I wanted to say was, I recently went to my grandson's baseball game this weekend, and he is nine years old. And when you talk about how we're trying to push this pride stuff through our schools, and now you're trying to push it in our communities and make it sound like it's something really wonderful for our kids to be part of, and it's not. They're too young. I'm looking at seven, eight, nine, 10-year-olds playing baseball, and these kids, all they're doing is thinking about playing baseball. There were boys playing, playing with boys. There was a girl on the boys' team at that time. There was a girl softball game going on. It was all girls, and none of them gave a hoot about the pride flag. It was about, before the game, they do the same thing we just did, to pledge allegiance to the United States, to the flag. It's about the American flag. It's not about a pride flag. The pride, these kids have no idea. When you start showing a pride flag in the middle of Medina, showing that you're believing in this flag, and shame on you, Mayor, for doing that without the vote of the public making that decision. You're brainwashing these kids at five, six, seven, nine, these kids at nine years old. They're on the sidelines playing baseball. They're semi-watching what's going on in the game. They're looking at their parents on the sidelines and waving to them and making funny gestures about the game. They're not, they have no idea that you're brainwashing them with this pride stuff, trying to tell them that they can become, a guy can become a girl or a girl can become a guy just through some medical stuff. So stop doing this brainwashing to our kids. Now, we elected you. Do what we ask you to do as elected officials, or we'll elect you out of your office. Stop doing this stuff. Our kids are important to all of us. My grandson is super important to me. Stop it!
Thank you, sir. Would there anybody else who'd like to address council this evening? Mr. Sheets.
Stan Sheets, former office at 225 East Liberty Street, currently retired attorney. Residence at 342 East Liberty Street, Medina, six houses away. I'm here to respectfully request the City Council of Medina to consider withdrawing from the 1969 Courthouse project and returning to your main campus. And I would like to give you 13 to 15 reasons to consider why you should withdraw from this project and do your own addition on your own campus. First, I feel Medina Municipal Court should remain next to City Hall and its current administration. Second, it should be next to the Law Department and the Law Director. Third, it should be right next to the Prosecutor's Office, all of which are housed in this building. And if you end up going to two buildings, you'll probably have a Law Director here and your prosecutor's in another building. It's a hell of a lot easier to manage when you're in the same building. Fourth, I feel the Medina Municipal Court should be right next to the Medina City Police Department. Many cases originate there, many cases are investigated there, and many of the officers have to testify in Medina Municipal Court. They simply walk across the street. Five, you should remain next to your exclusive Medina City Parking Deck with ample parking for staff, attendees, and eliminate the potential parking and traffic issues at the 1969 Courthouse with shared parking with the County Court of Common Pleas at 8:00 a.m. and throughout the day, with one single entrance in the rear, although your building will be facing the front on Public Square. Number six, it'll be much easier to make any changes in the future to both the building's interior or exterior if it solely is the decision of the Medina Mayor and the Medina City Council versus having to go through the bureaucracy of the Medina County Commissioners, the County Administrator, and getting all the multi-level approvals for any changes you wish to make. Seventh, you'll have much more flexibility for the Medina City Municipal Court relating to the use of the building for related services, such services that will evolve as the court practices change and procedures change, when you may utilize hired off-premises subcontractors to perform court services, all of which would have to be approved by the Medina County Commissioners based on the committee meeting that I heard just last, this week, earlier in the week when the committee was meeting discussing the lease. Eighth, information technology. You will have complete information technology independence if you keep your courthouse here. If you come to the 1969 Courthouse, any changes in relation to technology will also have to be approved by the Medina County Commissioners because they want it to be uniform with their systems in case ultimately they would take the building back. Nine, you could have a very cost-effective building program by doing a community design-build contract for your addition. You could add a 5,000-square-foot footprint. You could do two floors or three floors. You would have 10,000 to 15,000 additional feet to add to your current 12,000. You'd have a 27,000-square-foot building, much newer than the 1969 Courthouse, with much less maintenance expense in the future. And the estimates for such a building based on design-build is under $3 million compared to the $7 or $8 million you're looking at spending to remodel a 55-year-old 1969 Courthouse building. Ten, the city would own the asset entirely and control the destiny of the building totally by Medina City's government versus being in a landlord-tenant relationship where you only own your equipment in the building, as the fixtures and all improvements that you'd make with your investment would remain with the building at the termination of the lease. Eleven, the major share costs that were revealed at the committee meeting were in excess of $257,000. You would have 10,000 to 15,000 additional feet to add to your current 12,000. You'd have a 27,000-square-foot building, much newer than the 1969 courthouse, with much less maintenance expense in the future. And the estimates for such a building, based on design-build, is under $3 million compared to the $7 or $8 million you're looking at spending to remodel a 55-year-old 1969 courthouse building. Ten, the city would own the asset entirely and control the destiny of the building totally by Medina City's government versus being in a landlord-tenant relationship where you only own your equipment in the building as the fixtures and all improvements that you'd make with your investment would remain with the building at the termination of the lease. Eleven, the major share costs that were revealed at the committee meeting were in excess of $257,000 plus five to seven to nine security guards. Not simply one security guard at the entrance, but in order to cover a building that has three buildings, three floors, it's going to take five to seven security guards. You are to share a percentage of all of those based on the current proposed lease. Twelve, you could simply attach your new building, the addition of $10,000 or $15,000 to the current Medina Municipal Court by a glass atrium with an elevator servicing both sides of the building. You could retain your staff in the Medina Municipal Court building until the new addition is completed, move them to the new addition, and then remodel the remaining square footage to whatever use you wish to put it to. Thirteen, you would save future renovation costs and maintenance costs because the building, again, is 25 years newer than the 1969 courthouse. Fourteen, your law director, Mr. Huber, has publicly said, at least on two occasions, he would prefer to stay in the Medina Municipal Court and manage his people from here. And finally, there would be no need to continue negotiations relative the term and complete the landlord slanted lease with Bill Hudson and Scott Miller with the slippery slope answers that they provided to the committee relative capital improvements, rebears, who would originate each corrective measure, who would pay the city to reimburse while not having any opportunity to bid or select subcontractors, and with the approval of the county administrator and the Medina County Commissioners. Therefore, every possible decision would be time-consuming and require approvals by the landlord, the county administrator, and the Medina County Commissioners, and at sometimes even the judges that would be in the Court of Common Pleas. I respectfully submit this report to you and hope that you'll take it under true advisement and make some proper decisions in the next few months. I thank you very much for the opportunity to present my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address council this evening? Okay. We will move on then to introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions for this evening. A motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinance and resolutions, ordinance 123-22 and ordinance 124-22.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
I move to suspend the rules in three readings for the two ordinances that you mentioned.
A second.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Ordinance 123-22, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and implementation of Plotbox Cemetery Management Software for Use at Spring Grove Cemetery.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Plotbox is a cloud-based death care management solution that will enable us to digitize our records at Spring Grove Cemetery and help improve our burial operations. Additionally, this will allow us to integrate our cemetery records into our website to give the public access to burial records at any time. It'll significantly improve our services. This is pending final approval from the Law Department on the contract that just got sent to me today.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. We will pass it tonight, subject to final approval of the law director. And I believe also it did qualify for American Recovery Funds?
Yes, we are going to utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds for this purchase. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 12322 passes 4-0, subject to the law director's final approval.
Thank you. Ordinance 124-22, an ordinance amending ordinance number 82-22 passed April 25, 2022, relative to the South Prospect Street Reconstruction Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton?
This is me.
Or Mr. Durham. Thank you.
We're not changing anything with regard to the project. This is just the account numbers that are paying for it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 12422 passes 4-0.
Council comments.
Would you like to go first? All right.
Mr. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought I would take a moment to share with you some of the overwhelmingly positive response I received to what was initiated by me as a member of the City Council, the flags on the square, the pride flags. I'm just going to share a couple of the comments that were made, a couple of the emails that I received, messages. "Good afternoon, City of Medina officials. I just wanted to say thank you for flying the progress flag on the square. As some people may not be aware, not everything on that flag represents a sexual identity. I was pleasantly surprised and very proud of our city for this inclusive decision. As a mother of two young children, it is very encouraging to see this display of open-mindedness and acceptance right in the heart of Medina." New letter. "Thank you so much for allowing the pride flags to fly throughout the city of Medina. You may just save a life by showing Medina cares about all people. Suicide rates are so high for gay and trans teens, and this little bit of acceptance can make a world of difference in their lives. I'm sure you are not on social media much, but the amount of hatred and bigotry against anyone who is not a white heterosexual in Medina is rampant. It is scary and sad to me as an ally. Imagine how it feels to be faced with this hatred on a daily basis if you are different. Combating this hatred begins at home, and I am proud Medina as a city is helping people accept and live with one another in peace." This one is particularly close to my heart as it was initiated by a local group that is for LGBTQIA+ individuals who are also in recovery. If anyone is interested in those meetings, they meet every Thursday at 7:30 at the Hope Recovery Community. Today, they talked about how great it was to feel included. We are all very appreciative and grateful that the city is being inclusive of its LGBTQ people in Medina. There were 18 people at that meeting. Still, some of the people in the community feel as if they have to hide and are scared to put their face out there. We felt great seeing that representation and feel more comfortable with ourselves in Medina City because of that inclusion. As simple as a flag, it can help inspire hope and raise awareness to minorities in the city. Straight people get to see themselves in everything, from social media and movies or even simply walking down the street with their partner hand in hand. For some of us, this is still a terrifying and anxiety-inducing event. Hi, Jessica. Happy Pride. Just wanted to share a little story. A work friend visited Medina for the first time last weekend. She went to PJ Marley's with friends. She said, "When we got to the square, I saw the pride flags and all the people enjoying their evening outside, and Medina looks like such a welcoming place. I want to come back again. My friend is 30 and she's straight. Please keep fighting for the pride flags. It makes a difference. You make a big positive difference in this community. Never doubt that." Those are just a few of the comments, emails that I received. In comparison now, just to give you an idea of how many positive comments that I have received through those channels, it is over 1,000. Over 1,000 people took time out of their day to write me a note, to leave a comment letting me know how included a piece of fabric made them feel in their community. I am proud to stand with the LGBTQIA+ community, and I will continue to stand for them. Your God is not my God. One who does not accept people as they are is not a God that I want to follow. I am an accepting person, and I believe it was Jesus Himself that was documented as saying, "Love thy neighbor as thyself." He never said, "Don't love them if they're not the same as you." Love thy neighbor as thyself. Secondly, I would like to recognize the new businesses that opened on Friday. It was very exciting going to see that. Everyone knows that the ribbon-cutting trail is one of my favorite things to do. I would encourage you also to attend the events the mayor mentioned that are happening on the square: Juneteenth, Pizza Palooza, the Ormaco, as well as the party in the parks. Happy birthday to Pat as well. We all appreciate you sticking around for another year.
Thank you.
Hopefully, many more. If anyone has any more comments or would like to learn more about the LGBTQIA+ community, I'm happy to provide that information. There are scientific facts backing the fact that there are children that are young and look in the mirror every day. They go to the bathroom and they see that the parts on the outside don't match the parts on the inside. No child should have to live like that. And accepting someone as their true self is something that I truly believe in and I will continue to fight for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazelton. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and the great thing about our country, I respect the flag as much as anybody. The great thing about this country is we can have differences of opinion, and that's healthy. I don't have to agree with you. You don't have to agree with me. That doesn't mean we don't have to, that we have to dislike each other. I want to recognize the mayor, the administration, and my colleagues on council. They may not all have agreed with what you're saying or what Justice said, but they respect, we all respect each other. And I've used, in my 18 years on council, I've used this bully pulpit to say, you know, to be kind to one another. I don't care if you're a Democrat or a Republican or Independent or you don't follow politics at all. You can be kind to one another, and it will make a huge difference in our lives. Just the simple fact that you're not being hateful to one another or to your neighbors, a kind word, you know, doesn't, I'm not talking about someone's sexuality, but just seeing somebody down the street as they're passing you, just a kind word by saying hello or looking them in the eyes can make a difference in somebody's lives. And it's a simple thing to do. I want to, my heart goes out to the people of Ukraine. I pray for them, and I wish that they will be able to find peace soon in any war-torn regions in the world. But I want to thank Councilman Shields for bringing up Mr. Wetzel. He was 100% right when he said Mr. Wetzel did not like the emergency clause. And he had such a profound way when he would disagree with a vote, you know, especially on the emergency clause. When it got to his name, he would go, "No." And he worked part-time in his later years at Medina Hardware Store. And I always teased him about that. He had a great sense of humor, a great community member. But I would go in for, you know, whatever I needed from Medina Hardware. I'd say, "Oh, Mr. Wetzel." And he goes, "What do you need?" And I said, "Well, do you have such-and-such you need?" And he'd always look at me and smile and say, "No." So, you know, he was such a great guy. We lost another community member here that most of the females in this audience may not know, but a lot of the males did know Mr. Hershey, Don Hershey, who owned Hershey's Barber Shop. He was one of the many generations that worked at Hershey's Barber Shop. He passed away either today or yesterday. He was in his 80s, and he's going to be missed. He always had a good joke, was kind to his customers, and you always felt at home when you went there. His staff that still operates at Hershey's Barber Shop, they all loved him to death, and most of them have been there for several years. Mr. Hershey had retired, but he was still the boss, and they still respected him. I want to thank the mayor and my fellow council members for helping us celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Friends of the Cemetery. It was established 25 years ago. We honored with proclamations from the mayor and a resolution from the council members two of its original members, Teresa Merkel and Cynthia Son Young, who has been on the cemetery, Friends of the Cemetery, since inception. They've spent close to $3 million on improvements to the cemetery set up by a trust fund by Amos Mirz, who donated that money on his passing, and have been able to make improvements to the city-owned cemetery over the past 25 years that the city would always have loved to have done, but financially, we would not have been able to accomplish without their help. We did celebrate this past Saturday their 25-year anniversary with a party at the cemetery. Remember, Spring Grove Cemetery and Old Town Cemetery are part of our Medina County Park System, and Jansen and the Cemetery Saxon and their staff keeps the cemetery, I mean, it is spectacular. I had one of the members come up to me, who just lost a family member recently, and said, "You know, as I walk through this cemetery, I'm so proud of, you know, to have my husband be buried here, and it looks so nice. I just wonder if it's always going to look this nice." And I said, "Well, as long as you get the Friends of the Cemetery here, I think you're not going to have to worry about that, at least in our lifetime." So anyhow, please just be kind to one another. And again, know it's healthy to disagree, but you can do that with kindness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. You said things very well. I did want to thank the Friends of the Cemetery. They had a really wonderful event on Saturday celebrating their 25th anniversary. The cemetery just looked absolutely beautiful and just so proud of that asset and the Old Town Cemetery and all that they've done. So congratulations to Teresa and Cynthia and the other trustees for all they do for that cemetery. Jenny, thank you for a couple more stories about Mr. Wetzel. I truly respected him so much and enjoyed talking with him, and we disagreed on many things, but he was so open to discussion and debate and just always respected everybody's opinion, which is a good lesson tonight, too. And then, thank you for talking about Mr. Hershey from Hershey's Barber Shop. Growing up here in Medina, it was a rite of passage when you got to go to Hershey's and get a haircut, but it was generations of, between Don Hershey and Jimmy, the barber. Those were, it was kind of a true barber shop, and Don Hershey would love to talk. It was a great place to catch up on everything that was going on in Medina and at Hershey's Barber Shop. So if there's no other comments, well, we are adjourned. Thank you for everybody who attended tonight and shared their opinions.